Are we ready over there, Ms. Wendy? Okay. Ma'am, do you want to come up? I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Good morning. We're going to start again. I have a few more public comments that... Hold on. We want to hear you, so hold on. Okay. Ah, okay. Thank you. We have a lost phone up here, if you're looking for it. Okay. Public comment? Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Eugenia Diaz. My name is Eugenia Diaz, and I live at the very end of Copco Lake, where the river comes right through, very close to our property. And they said they were going to pull out the docks. And they tore out part of the dock, and they left the other part of our dock. And we have other docks that have floated down the river and come on our property, not our property, but right where the river is. And so I want to know if they're ever going to clean that up. And also, we have an off spray. And I was watching an off spray a couple of weeks ago, and it just came down. And, you know, they dive in a lake, not a river. And it was just sad to see. And plus, we've had eight deer that have died. And also, what else? Something else that's... Oh. The birds. I feed the birds. And there really aren't any birds. I saw a blue jay the other day. And they're gone. So I hear quail in the bushes, but that's about it. So anyway, those things should be brought up, especially about the docks and the poor animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Chandler? Chris, they already spoke? They did? Okay. Sorry. Some of them are... Gib Anderson. Good morning.
I'm Gib Anderson. I've lived here on the lake for 47 years. Raised a family up here. Caught them all how to fish and hunt. Had a wonderful time up here. This KRRC gave me $17,000 to relocate... To relocate while they blew down the lake over a six-month period for fear that my property was going to fall down into the lake. Okay? They offered me $5,000 for a well. Everybody knows that $5,000 is not going to buy you much for a well. I expect my well to go dry. What can you say about it? You know, they're not going to put in the water system for me. They're not going to bring in water, a tank or whatever, to cry in shame. Anyway, I gave up my great day of skiing to be here today. What a hell of a way to spend your birthday. Happy birthday to me.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to... No one online? Is that correct? To item A. County Administration, Ms. Nielsen.
Thank you, Board. Elizabeth Nielsen, County Administrator. And thank you for... Good morning, and thank you to everybody for showing up. Just a couple of things before I dive in. I would like to thank Danny Fontaine, Frances Gill, and Linda Ebert for opening up the community center to us. And when myself and a couple of my coworkers showed up yesterday to set up, it was pretty much set up. And so greatly appreciate that. That has been a tremendous help. Also, just as a reminder, if you plan to comment on any of these items, please fill out a blue card at the table by the door. Leave them at the table. A staff member will be sure to grab them and get them to the chair. So this item is intended to hear community concerns, inquiries, and comments communicated by the public due to reservoir drawdown and Klamath Dam removal activities. We've already had a lot of comments this morning. But again, feel free to fill out the blue card or comments on a specific item. The county, including staff and county board members, have received numerous phone calls, emails, and texts related to local impacts resulting from drawdown and removal activities, which is a huge prompt for the meeting today. These inquiries from the public have included impacts to wells, wildlife trapped and expiring in the muddy areas of the former reservoirs, speeding traffic, drones flying closely over private homes, and the current condition of the Klamath River. The presentation items included on today's agenda after mine are intended to address many of these issues in more detail. However, we know that they will not address all issues. We have crafted this agenda item to be open to public comment after my presentation to allow the public and residents the opportunity to speak to community concerns. I want to be clear that the county may not have the authority or jurisdiction to address all concerns. We will make the effort, however, to address those that we can and, at the very least, connect people with the right folks to answer questions. And although myself and fellow staff members and presenters here today may not have answers to all your questions, we will be looking into those and getting the best answers we can. I want to take a moment to remind people that we have a Lower Klamath Dam Removal webpage that is easily accessible on the main county webpage through a bubble titled "Klamath Dam Decommissioning." Following today's meeting, we will be going through that website or that webpage to see what needs to be updated, depending on the outcome of today's meetings and the inquiries we receive. We also have an email address. That is lkdinfo@co.siscu.ca.us. Again, that is lkdinfo@co.siscu.ca.us. We highly recommend folks request to get on that email list. And they are encouraged to also submit questions, comments, or concerns through that webpage. We monitor that constantly. If you need to sign up to be on that email list, find me anytime today. For those who wish to contact the county via phone, please feel free to dial 530-842-8012. Again, that is 530-842-8012. I'm happy to give that information out anytime today as well. Lastly, Chair Cobbsev has a statement that he will read. Following that statement, I'm happy to take any questions from the Board and then turn it over to public comment.
So the statement that I have to read is from the Uroch Tribe. We had reached out to the tribal nations to come here and give a presentation today. They could not. So the Uroch Tribe, in particular, have presented this statement to be read to the public. Representatives of the Uroch Tribe are not able to be here today. However, we wanted to share some information communicated to county staff and some specific information related to replanting efforts that the Uroch Tribe is carrying out. The Uroch Tribe is under contract with RES for the revegetation efforts at the areas formerly inundated by the reservoirs. These revegetation efforts are underway, and the Uroch Tribe is committed to seeing this effort through. As detailed in the recent press release published on KRRC's social media page, all 2,200 acres of land formerly submerged under the reservoirs will be regulated using billions of plant seeds from 98 different varieties of native plants. Different mixes of native seed will be applied to best suit the environment in a respective area. But we are not just sowing seeds. Thousands of plants currently growing in containers will be replanted in the project along the area with plugs and bare root trees. While the Uroch Tribe was not able to be here today, the county will continue to work with them to see if they can be available at a future meeting to share the progress of their replanting efforts. Ms. Nielsen? Anything further?
Nothing further unless there's any questions from the Board.
Questions from the Board? With regard to some of the issues that we've heard today, I think many of them will probably... I'm not sure where it's going to come up, but the fire suppression, is that going to come under...
Under emergency services?
It will. Okay. Thank you. And the docks, will that come under CKM?
I believe that Chelsea may be able to speak to that or possibly KRRC may be able to speak to that.
And the night work somewhere in there as well?
Chelsea is going to speak to that.
Okay. And then we were asked about... And I'm trying to just be sure that we'll answer some of these questions. The fishing access future.
CDFW is here today, may be able to speak to that.
And with regard to the water quality monitoring, I know the county has done some, but is there anyone else that will be speaking to that?
Yes. Rick Dean with Community Development on behalf of...
And will there be anyone else, for instance, from an agency or even the KRRC itself?
KRRC is presenting. I don't know if that's part of their presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
And just as a reminder, I... There are a lot of questions and concerns that were expressed this morning. There will be more expressed throughout today. Any of those that are not addressed, staff will be... And our contractor will be working on and getting a response back to folks.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So let's move on to item 4B, CKM Environmental. Chelsea?
Hello. I am Chelsea Murphy with CKM Environmental. I am the county's project manager for the Lower Klamath Dam Removal Project. I thank you, Board, for having me here today. I would also like to extend my thanks, as did Elizabeth, to Danny, Linda, and Frances for hosting us up here and helping us set up. They did an excellent job. I would also like to thank the members of the public for being here, as well as thank those that came up to speak today. I recognize that is a very difficult thing for a lot of people to do. This is an emotional topic. I really appreciate hearing comments and concerns about the project. There is a lot of folks on the agenda today, so I do not want to steal their thunder. So I'm going to focus my presentation on questions that came up during the last Board meeting, try to touch on some questions and concerns that came up today as well, as best I can. For those concerns and questions that I'm unable to answer today, I will definitely be... So as a quick reminder, I would like to touch on public safety. We encourage people to please stay out of the reservoirs. It's for your own safety. They're muddy. There's unstable soils. There's a lot of erosion going on. Please don't go out there and get stuck. We don't want there to be an emergency. I also would like to say that we advise people to stay out of the river. It is very turbid. You cannot see what's in the river. There may be debris and hazards in the river. Again, for your own safety, please stay out of the river when it's very turbid. One more point of public safety, and our road commissioner is here today, so he'll probably speak to this a little bit more. But everybody, please slow down on the roadways. And this is something that we echo to KRC, their contractors, all the time. I'm saying out loud for the public as well that we all just need to be safe and considerate on the roadways. They are not in the best of shape, as many of you can tell. And so please slow down and be cautious when driving. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and go through some questions from the January Board meeting that came up and provide some answers to the Board on those. The first question was in regards to the USGS gauge on the Klamath by Sagid Valley. It had been offline for a while. I was able to get in contact with USGS. That gauge is back online and available to the public. There was a question from the Board about the acorns that are being used for restoration. There were some concerns that the acorns were collected from areas with sudden oak death. I'm going to read what I received back from KRC and their contractor, RES, about the acorns. The acorns were harvested mostly around Iron Gate and Copco reservoirs with a small amount harvested from the Rogue River. All acorns came from areas with no known causes of sudden oak death, and testing will be conducted both on acorns and bare root stalks before planting. There was a question from the Board regarding monitoring reports. And the question was whether or not it would be possible for the Board and the public to see the reports earlier than when they're being posted on the FERC eLibrary. I'm also going to read a statement that I received from KRC when I posed this question. It would not be appropriate for KRRC or contractors to provide draft or provisional monitoring reports to the county or anyone else in advance of filing with regulators, nor should those be provided immediately after filing. We file those reports consistent with our permit terms and conditions and await agency reviews for any comments or questions before considering those to be final. In some cases, monitoring information such as water quality data is available via internet sites in real time or near real time. And that they believe that the county... It's reasonable to assume that the county would be notified if there are any issues related to monitoring that would warrant county awareness or engagement. There was also a request from the Board that any fencing that is installed for protection of restoration areas be communicated to the Siskiyou County Department of Agriculture as the county is an open-range county. That request has been made to the KRC. Additional fish hatchery questions, which have come from the Board. I'm in coordination with CDFW. CDFW is aware of those questions and will be responding, hopefully shortly. But they are working on some responses about questions regarding fish hatchery. Night construction. This came up during the last Board meeting, and Chairman Cobbsev had just mentioned it again. I was able to speak to some of the contractors this morning, and the night construction has ended at Iron Gate. The lights are being turned off at night. And it's our... There's no planned night construction. However, if there is going to be night construction, we requested that we are made aware of it so that the residents are made aware of it ahead of time. We had also made a request that any blasting that is going to be audible to the public as part of the project, that we be notified ahead of time to let the public know. So I have some updates from the project as they relate to the county. KRC is here today, as are many other speakers. And so I don't want to duplicate their information. So I'll just touch base really quickly on a few things here. One is a road update, and the road commissioner is here today, so he can speak more about the roads. But mile marker 13, that construction has ended. It is... Was very well done. The county is going to continue to monitor and respond to the road conditions out at Copco. And the county has been aware... Has been made aware of unsafe drivers on the roadways and has been reporting this up to KRC and their contractors. There's been a lot of questions about firefighting and other emergency response. That's going to be covered later in today's agenda, so I'm not going to touch on that. Wildlife strandings in the reservoir. The county has received a lot of questions and concerns from the public about wildlife getting stranded in the reservoirs. We have been in close communication with CDFW. They are here to give an update. But I will say that they responded very quickly to concerns and have done a really good job at responding. They have been doing extra patrols around the reservoirs and installing deterrents for wildlife in certain areas around the reservoirs as well. A few updates on some county actions as part of the project. We're continuing weekly coordination with CDFW and KRC. We have received a transportation schedule from the contractors for heavy equipment. We will be working with Public Works and the contractors on a global transportation permit for heavy loads. That is part of the Roads and Bridges MOU. And as a reminder, ultra-heavy loads, which are planned as part of the project, will still require individual permits. I'm going to touch very briefly on water quality. I know that's come up a lot today. The county staff and the Board are aware of the report that was published on Siskiyou News yesterday, showing high levels of chromium and other heavy metals in the system. While those numbers are alarming, the county wants to make sure that the public and we understand those numbers in context. So how do those heavy metals in suspended sediment affect the public and environmental health? We have Rick Dean from Community Development here today. They have been taking water samples as well along the river. And he will be speaking a little bit more about that effort moving forward. But we are looking to help provide some context around what these sampling results mean. Any questions?
Questions from the Board? Supervisor, help?
Thank you. I wasn't very comforted. I asked a question about sudden oak death syndrome. The disclosure that some of the acorns came from the Rogue River is not very comforting to me. I'd like to see the county request that we see the map of where those acorns were collected, because everybody knows that even firewood coming in from Oregon is quarantined at the California border because of this disease. So I still hold that concern I had weeks ago.
I will request that information.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
The hallway to the end, specifically.
Okay. With regard to water quality, is the North Coast Regional Water Board, who evidently gave the permit for the construction originally, and it was supposed to be a permit for deconstruction, have they been monitoring that you're aware of?
So the water monitoring reports that I have seen are being conducted by RES as part of the permitting conditions. There is a water quality monitoring plan that is part of this project. The results from the grab samples... So there's two types of water quality monitoring happening. One is continuous monitoring through data sonds, which collects general information like turbidity, dissolved oxygen, et cetera. And then there is grab sampling that is occurring at various points along the river. And those grabs samples will give a lot more information on particular constituents of concern, which are regulated through those permits. Heavy metals. The only heavy metal that is being analyzed that I could tell from the monitoring reports for California is aluminum. And therefore, the samples that have been requested through Community Development, Environmental Health, are looking at a wider range of constituents than just aluminum when it comes to heavy metals.
And with regard to the wells, what does that look like future? Is the tanks... Is that going to be the cure? Or do we know anything more of how that's going to be handled?
Yeah. The information I have about the wells, and particularly the wells along... The well along Patricia that was servicing the 11 homes that went dry. I know a public community member had spoken to that earlier. There is a tank that was delivered by KRC and their contractors. I do not know how long that is planned. I don't know what the remedy is long term. I think that's something that either KRC can speak today to or at a later Board meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else from anyone for Chelsea? Okay. I think I've got a couple of public comments on this item. One is from Brian... Is it Egan? He left? Okay. Who's the other one? Chrissy Reynolds. Do you have one on this item? Public comment?
Chrissy Reynolds.
Yes.
Thank you. My concern is the longevity of these wells. And I know we have a history of just having our issues pushed down the road, pushed down the road, pushed down the road. And that is not acceptable. This is people's well water. Their drinking water, their bathing water, their cooking water. The fact that you even mentioned you don't know how long it's going to be, that's unacceptable. These people had water. They were always going to have water, for the most part. This was something that was warned about, one of our major concerns, that has been a part of the process for at least 20 years in letters to FERC, to the Water Board, to Army Corps of Engineers. In every document, that has been first and foremost. And within days of this being breached, people lost their water. People will probably continue to lose their water. They need to be made whole, period. Not just for a short term, but for as long as people are going... Otherwise, you're going to start condemning property, and that is not acceptable.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? Can you help me out here? Okay. Okay. Sorry. I can't read it. Oh, it might be Holly. Is it Holly? So this is on 4B?
Hello. I'm Holly Hancert again. If you guys could help me on this 4B, the person who is speaking. I know I'm not very smart in many ways, but you guys keep saying in the beginning of this meeting, whatever it is, KRCR. I, like five years and five days or 10 years and 10 days, way behind. I don't even know who the heck is KRC. What is this entity?
KRCE.
KR... The one who's like the big... The people who are tearing down the dams. I don't know who they are. Can you help us for the public? I mean, I know a lot of people here know, but I personally don't know. And so maybe this is that 4B because she mentioned that. And I think we could... Quickly, maybe you could tell me who they are?
Go ahead.
I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. For those of us that have been living and breathing this for a while, we're using a lot of acronyms, so I apologize. KRRC stands for the Klamath River Renewal Corporation. They are the project proponent for the project or the licensee on the project for removals of dams. CDFW, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the State of Oregon are also signed on as co-licenses as part of the project as well. So you'll hear CDFW as an acronym as well. If there are any other questions about acronyms, please ask. I'm happy to help. I know it can get very confusing, and I rattle them off very quickly. I speak quickly, so I apologize.
Yeah. That would be good, because I want to keep this moving along. Thank you, Chelsea. All right. We're going to move on to item 4C, Klamath Water Users Association. Who do we have here? Are they online?
If we could have Paul Simmons on Zoom, raise his hand. Star nine, please.
Klamath Water Users represents the irrigation districts up in the Klamath Basin. For those of you that don't know, Klamath Irrigation District, Klamath Drainage District, and the Tulley Lake Irrigation District. and the Tulley Lake Irrigation District. Can you turn him up a bit or put a mic on him?
Just a second, Paul. We're connecting you to the speaker. All right, go ahead, Paul. Give us, give us just a moment. Sorry. We're using you to test our speaker, apparently. Can you try again? I'm just going to bring the microphone over to our laptop. All right, go ahead, Paul.
Okay, are we good?
Yes.
Okay, good. Well, thank you, Chairman Cobbsev and Supervisors. Very much appreciate you holding this meeting and appreciate the invitation to address you. I'm Paul Simmons, the Executive Director of the Klamath Water Users Association.
Just a second, Paul. Apologies. Can you try again, Paul? Okay, one more time. Just a second. Just a second.
Do we want to come back to Paul? Both tight.
Paul, can you try one more time? Apologies.
Yes.
We're having trouble with our speaker. Just a second.
Hold on, just a couple more minutes.
Okay, Paul, can you try one more time? Okay, Paul, one more time. No, not, not yet. That works if you, yes, that works. Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
So Klamath Water Users, because we're having technical difficulties, we're going to receive a statement, is that correct, Ms. Nielsen? We're going to receive a statement from them to read into the record, is that correct?
Correct. I will read it in later today.
Okay. So with that, we're going to break for lunch and we're going to reconvene at, I think, 1:30 is what I have, so you're free for lunch.